Call the meeting to order. The meeting for December the 20th, 2021 at 6:00 PM is now in session. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag led by Councilperson Osher?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will take the roll call. Councilperson Genever?
Here.
Councilperson Schonberg? Councilperson Becker?
I'm here.
Councilperson Fisher?
Here, Your Honor.
Councilperson Bradley?
I'm here, Your Honor.
Councilperson Massa is absent. She did call. Councilperson Osher?
Present.
Councilperson Picarala? And before... I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the...
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Mayor, do we want to discuss whether or not to ask Brandon whether we should modify to remove 1859 this evening? Brandon?
Yes. Yes, so I did receive a call from Milton's Council, Quincy Hall Council, that they would now be appearing this evening. There's some issues to be hammered out with the agreement and conditions that they want on the CID. It is something appropriate still to discuss for the whole session tonight, but we would now be receiving forward on the order.
So regardless of their presence or absence, the documents are not finalized?
Correct.
Okay. And that being the case, I would move to approve the agenda minus Bill 1859 this evening.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carried. Madam Clerk, has this agenda been posted, dated, signed, and/or initialled? Before we get into the meeting, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for Mr. David Tatro, which is the father-in-law of Mrs. Mary Schonberg and his stepfather, Craig Schonberg, who passed away on December the 7th. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes of the council meeting of November 22nd, 2021?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the November 22nd meeting, including the public hearing.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carried. Public comment? We have none. Check register and bills and financial report and sales tax report, Councilperson Becker and Madam Clerk.
I'll move to approve the financial report, including the sales tax report in its entirety, unless you have something you want to discuss, shall we?
The motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carried. Committee reports. Water committee, Councilperson Picarala.
I don't have anything on them. They work on Water Lake, 8th Street. I think they've got a couple.
Yes, they did. Darrow 8th Street, on the east, on the north and south end. The last one was on the north end. I was up there early that afternoon. It was getting locates because of all the electrical for the stoplights and everything, and they was out there all day until 8:30 that night. But they did get it fixed. It was down under a curb. Anything else, Mr. Picarala? Public welfare and fire, Councilperson Fisher?
Yes, the fire department had five classes, a total of 78 calls. The report is in your package.
And they also have been busy. Building commissioner, Mr. Cox, you have anything on that, Madam Clerk?
No.
Street and street lighting, Councilperson Bradley?
Uh, Dave, there's a, um, this letter's in the package here. We have a lot of pick-ups, it looks like, but won't pick up 100, won't stop.
Yes.
Every month. Other than that, no, that's all I got.
Police department, Councilperson Schonberg?
Um, I don't have anything on Captain Prudhoe. I have something.
No, ma'am. You just want me to hear if they stack that anyway?
I will say the, um, this department did a great job with Charlotte's Pop this year.
Yes, they did.
At Walmart. We were in for service, 35 students from the elementary building.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Proud of everybody involved.
Anything else, Councilperson Schonberg?
No, ma'am.
Anything else, Captain?
No, ma'am.
Council liaison reports, library, Councilperson Fisher?
I have some to report, ma'am.
Park, Councilperson Osher? No, sir. Sewerage commission, Councilperson Picarala?
I don't have anything.
Planning and zoning, Councilperson Becker?
Uh, I believe we have a meeting that the chairman wanted to schedule for next month that will be at the regular third Thursday at 6:30 PM to discuss some changes to our procedures, and then we have something on here for final approval for this evening. That's all.
Yes, sir. Zoning of appeals, Councilperson Genever?
I have nothing.
Level commission, Councilperson Schonberg?
I do not have anything at this time.
Public response, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak of something that we had at the previous council meeting? Now I'll move on to old business. We have the Twin City Mall CID, which has been struck from the agenda.
Correct.
Is anybody going to talk to them before next time we meet, if they ever show up? Uh, I was going to bring it up to them, the lighting up at the Dollar Tree. All their parking lot lights, none of them working. They got building lights, but parking lot starts, but...
You mean in the oldie complex then?
Yeah.
Yeah. The old?
No, the new.
No, they're good. They're good. They're good. Yeah, up there. There's a CID on that as well. Uh, I don't know what their agreement is, but their lights need to work. Their parking lot starts, but...
I understand, yeah. I haven't talked to them about that. I have spoken to them, but I've not been in time since the last time we met, so I'll have to report in our meeting.
The, uh, while we're on the subject, the signage lighting for that sign there in front of Harbor Freight flickering for days.
Yeah. Yeah. Two drivers.
New business, proclamation for kindness week. Ms. Heather Crosby. Ms. Crosby, if you would come forward, please?
Oh, I can do better than that.
This proclamation, moral kindness day. Whereas our daily lives are filled with information regarding crime, violence, and disaster, often causing feelings of helplessness and... Whereas the many daily acts of kindness that occur in our community are unknowns, and whereby, by recognizing these acts of kindness, all members of our community will be made aware of the importance of being kind to others.
As you may recall, we discussed this at the last meeting, I believe. This was... How can I describe this? I was under the impression at the November planning and zoning meeting that the recommendation being made to the council at that time was for final approval, but I guess for a subdivision, we have a two-stage process that requires a little bit of additional documentation, things that were supposed to be on the plans that weren't reflected. That was communicated poorly to the P&amp;Z Commission, in my opinion. But anyway, Mr. Compton revised his plans, brought them back. They were recommended for final approval by planning and zoning last week, and it's here before us tonight for final approval. There's no change in the plans. Is that accurate, other than reflecting those additional facts?
Correct. It was last time.
Yeah.
And also, the planning and zoning meeting went very well. It was well explained, all the drawings and everything. It, uh, and it was a unanimous decision for approval by the planning and zoning commission to send it on to the council. Is that correct, Mr. Becker?
That is correct. Frankly, I thought we did it last time, which was also unanimous, actually. So...
Can you give a refresher on that? I looked here last week.
Oh, um, or is the copy of the plans in here? No. Uh, Lonny, you could probably describe it faster and better than I could.
Sure.
The old bottle plant, he's dividing that into...
Re-portion of a lot of stuff. Yeah. No, I caught it in the paper somewhere, Facebook or somewhere, I read about it. Yeah. Okay, so, do we need an explanation? No, I got it.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't get to where Crawford was. Now, now I got it. Now, now. Need to send them deer out with her, too. I know, and I understand. Yeah. Sure, they're all tied.
Yeah, I know.
So if, uh, if nobody has any additional questions, I'll recommend or I'll make a motion to, uh, for the council to grant final approval to this subdivision.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Compton.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very much.
Yes, sir.
When we get him to the county hall, I'll come by and pick it up and it is reported and bring back your copy.
Have you got, have you got the drawings on that, or are you still not? Rick's office?
Actually, I'll make them.
Yep.
Whenever, you just call me whenever you got them signed.
You got it, sir. Take care of it. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is Bill number 1860-2021, update and modify the city's water and sewer rates. We need one reading only this evening.
I'll move to read Bill 1860-2021 on its first reading by title only.
The motion's been made and seconded to read Bill 1860-2021 by title only. May I ask a question, Madam Clerk?
Of course.
Have you got a minute?
Oh, no. That's correct. It will be approved in January.
That's right. You're right. I'm sorry.
It will be approved. It will be 2022.
Yeah, I just, okay, got it. I'm sorry. The motion's been made and seconded to read Bill 1860-2022.
Right.
By title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carried. Madam Clerk, can we have the first reading of Bill 1860-2022, please, by title only?
Bill number 1860-2022 on its first reading by title only. In ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, providing for the ordinance of chapter 28, RST, Division 4, Section 28-68A, and chapter 28, Article 3, Division 5, Section 28-165A, of the total ordinances of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, so as to update and modify the city's watering and drainage.
I'll move to approve Bill 1860-2022 on its first reading.
The motion been made and seconded to accept Bill 1860-2022 on its first reading by title only. Any further discussion?
Just a word on this, Mayor. This is the standard 2% increase that was recommended as part of our water rate study that we had done several years ago.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I'm sorry.
Hearing none? Motion carried. I would entertain a motion to table Bill 1860-2022 until the next meeting in January.
So moved.
Motion been made and seconded to table. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Bill number 1861-2021, repealing the ordinance number 1858-2021 and imposing a use tax for general revenue. I think we need to read this two times this evening so we can get it out there.
Yes. I'll move to read Bill 1861-2021 on its first reading by title only, and everybody settle in, because this title is half a page long.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we get an explanation for why we're redoing this and a short explanation?
Yes, sir.
Um, upon reflection, when this was originally presented to the council, it was presented without the explanatory statement. After several conversations with the city attorney and consulting with the county clerk, Ken Waller, who then consulted with the county councillor, Wes Yates, as to whether or not we were permitted to include this explanatory statement, there's nothing that says we can specifically, there's nothing that says we can't, but Festus has already approved it with similar language. My recommendation would be to include this explanatory statement, because everything in there is true.
That's correct. And it's, it's one thing, you know, when you ask the citizens for a tax increase or whatever, they have always supported us, whether it be for the schools, whether it be for the city, or whatever it's for, as long as we explain it to them and understand, they understand where the money's going to go to and what it's all about, and that's just basically what it boils down to, is educating the citizens of this town.
So essentially, what we're doing with this explanatory statement is we're modifying the ordinance that was passed last time to include that ballot language. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for asking. Now, where were we? We were approving it on the first reading.
There's a motion and a second. It's already been.
We're just...
And discussion. Madam Clerk, we have the first reading of Bill 1861-2021, please, on its first reading by title only.
Bill number 1861-2021 on its first reading by title only. In ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, repealing ordinance number 1858-2021 and imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate equal to the total local sales tax, in effect for the privilege of storing, using, or consuming within the city any article of tangible personal property pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Sections 144.600 through 144.761, RSMO, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced, or raised in the same amount as any city sales taxes repealed, reduced or raised, and providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the general election to be held in the city on April 5th, 2022.
I'll move to approve Bill 1861-2021 on its first reading.
The motion been made and seconded to accept Bill 1861-2021 on its first reading by title only. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carried.
Mayor, I'll move to read Bill 1861-2021 a second time by title only.
The motion's been made and seconded to read Bill 1861-2021 on its second and final reading by title only. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carried. Madam Clerk, can we have the second and final reading, please?
Bill number 1861-2021 on its second and final reading by title only. In ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, repealing ordinance number 1858-2021 and imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate equal to the total local sales tax, in effect for the privilege of storing, using, or consuming within the city any article of tangible personal property pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Sections 144.600 through 144.761, RSMO, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced, or raised in the same amount as any city sales taxes repealed, reduced or raised, and providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the general election to be held in the city on April 5th, 2022.
I'll move to approve Bill 1861-2021 on its second and final reading.
The motion been made and seconded to accept Bill 1861-2021 on its second and final reading. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carried. I will poll the council. Councilperson Bradley?
Yes.
Councilperson Osher?
Yes.
Councilperson Genever?
Yes.
Councilperson Becker?
Yes.
Councilperson Fisher?
Yes.
Councilperson Schonberg?
Yes.
Councilperson Picarala?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, Bill number 1861-2021 now becomes ordinance 1861-2021. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
The next thing we have on the agenda is the city administrator's report. How can he report if he's in Hawaii? So, that's...
The weather's fine.
Yeah, the weather's fine.
Yeah. Um, Mayor, Jason sent me an email with a few notes as to if anything should come up. Here's what he was going to say, and I'm having some difficulty pulling up my city email on my phone, but I will come back.
I got the same one.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right. In that case, never mind.
Mayor's report, I did put a copy of some radio ads in everybody's, everybody's box today, and I would like to move forward with these radio ads, and it will come out of the mayor's billing account. We usually do it every year.
It's $110?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll move to proceed with those.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carried. The only other thing I have is I'd like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas to all. Have a great Christmas and a Happy New Year, but above all, have a safe one. And with that, I will go to the roundtable. Councilperson Picarala?
Aye.
Councilperson Schonberg? Councilperson Fisher?
Nothing.
Councilperson Becker?
Uh, Mayor, I did have one question that I didn't get to ask, or I forgot to ask when we were going through the street and street lighting report.
Yes, sir.
Uh, how are we looking on readiness for winter weather? Have you got everything ready to go?
Yes, sir, we do. The mechanic's been working very hard on rehabbing our salt trucks, which sat down there for almost a year, out in the weather and everything. You've got them all ready to go. We've got our salt bin full, so we're ready to, uh, ready to work on if we have to. Hopefully, we don't.
Good deal. Good deal.
Councilperson Genever?
Got a couple of things. Some of the Schonbergs, my condolences about the passing of your father-in-law. I know times are tough. Those types of things happen. Number two, I sent out an email about the, uh, the port in Herkey, where there was a big announcement this week with the container-on-vehicle technology coming up the river. Got quite a bit of publicity all over St. Louis, and I asked if how well we were plugged into that, and I think Tony responded, I think he was the only one that did respond, and said that Jason is on the committee for the Port Authority, so he's probably the one that could get us the information. But specifically, I'd kind of like to know, there's a preliminary plan that was on one of the, one of the TV stations, and they had it up on a billboard, and I wouldn't mind getting a copy of anything that they have. I, I know it's not our city, but it's like right next to our city, so I'd kind of like to know what's going on. Um, so if anybody comes up with anything like that, I appreciate. And number three, at the Historical Society next door, our youngest member of the group accidentally closed one of the cabinets with a combination lock on it, and we can't get it open. The instructions to open it up are on the cabinet, and I was just over there trying to, trying to do it, but I haven't done one of those combination locks in probably 45 years, so if anybody has any expertise on that, you know, a stethoscope and, yeah...
I opened many at a high school.
Yeah.
We can go over there.
I was going to say, you need a, you need a stethoscope and a shady friend. That's what you need.
Well, the instructions are kind of cryptic. It says, you know, turn... It says turn four times, and I don't know if that means four times past zero or, you know, so... You got it? Okay. Uh, no, it's a, it's one of the jars in the, in the storage room. There is a safe over there, but...
It used to be over here, and I was going to say, I know that combination, I can help you out.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that one's open. That one's open. Anyway, that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilperson Osher?
Nothing, sir.
Councilperson Bradley?
Nothing, sir.
Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Captain Prudhoe?
Uh, just wanted to say, I need to get the emails on the guy up on Taylor. We are doing everything possible legally, and that's, some people are like, why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? We were trying to do it legally. He ended up there again today. Like, he cannot park there. We have towed his vehicle, we served the search warrant, we've written...
Up on Taylor.
... petitions. Matt Brewer has been on, because it looks like a disaster, and if I was a neighbor, I would not want that, but we're on it, and we just keep staying on it. Brandon's on it, uh...
1,100 block of Taylor.
1,000 block, isn't it?
Or, uh, 202 or 201.
Yeah.
But anyway, we are on it, and he'll post his, or he'll post, uh, his in-house, and he'll be driving it right back down the road. He does the state control, pulls him over, took it off, posted the, uh, the tow bill, $300 whacking. He just, he doesn't miss a beat, so I don't know if, you know, usually with people like that, you, how you stop that is by enforcing it and then the repercussions that he pays the fines. Well, apparently, the fine, he must be rich, but he's not having any compensation.
I think Peeble even told him.
Yeah, they did. A lot of it, uh, last, probably the same last Thursday.
Believe me, my phone rings.
My, my phone rings off the hook on this.
Are you not getting them?
No, I don't get them.
That's daily.
Well, it'd be in, in the ward. It'd be in the ward.
Maybe it's just because of the work that I own. Help from the man, I'm like, it's just, it's ridiculous, and we were tired of dealing with it, but we have to pay, you know, just like we can make it work or whatever, go and friends upon the fourth of November, do what we're supposed to do, but not going to murder and attack.
Yes.
Yep.
Appreciate your attention to that.
As soon as I look at the family, I'm not, kind of weekly, I read. I've never seen anything like it, and I don't know if mental illness is playing a factor. He's a super nice guy, but he just doesn't get it. I, I don't get it. I've never seen it. 27 years ago, please, it's been, I've never seen anything like it. We tried every night, tactic to help him out, but everything, I've never seen anything like it. But I'd say...
Anything else, Mr. Prudhoe?
No, sir.
Mr. Cherry?[1769.75] Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Are we adjourning or going into closed session?
Well, I, we will adjourn this meeting and then go into a closed session, into a special meeting.
Yes, sir. I believe we had a motion and a second.
Is there a... Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the meeting and go into a special meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carried. Mr. Becker, would you do the honors of...
Yes. Notice is hereby given that pursuant to the instance of the City Council of the City of Crystal City, Missouri, a special meeting of the City Council has been called for Monday, December 20th, 2021, to immediately follow the regular council meeting to be held at the City Council chambers at City Hall. The tentative agenda for this meeting includes, one, convening into a closed meeting pursuant to Missouri Revised Statute Section 610.021 Sub 1 to discuss legal actions, causes of action, or litigation involving the city, and any confidential or privileged communications between the city or its representatives and attorneys pursuant to Missouri Revised Statute Section 610.021 Sub 2 for the purpose of leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate by the city where public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration therefore. Two, reconvening in an open session, and three, adjournment of special meeting.
And Madam Clerk, has this agenda been posted, dated, signed, and/or initialled?
Yes, sir.
I will take, I will take the roll call of the meeting. Councilperson Ginever?
Yes.
Councilperson Schonberg? Councilperson Becker?
Present.
Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Picarella? Councilperson Osher?
Present.
Which time?
I need to read the other notice, right? You want me to read the other notice?
Yes, would you please?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Crystal City, Missouri, will duly vote during the special meeting on Monday, December 20th, 2021, to immediately follow the regular council meeting to close a portion of said meeting for the purpose of discussing legal actions, causes of action, or litigation involving the city, and any confidential or privileged communications between the city or its representatives and attorneys pursuant to Missouri Revised Statute Section 610.021 Sub 1, and for leasing, purchase of real estate by the city where public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration therefore. Such meetings shall be conducted at the City Council chambers at City Hall.
And Madam Clerk, has this notice been posted, dated, signed, and/or initialled?
Yes, sir.
I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
The motion's been made and seconded to go in closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carried. We are in closed session.